Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, March the 2nd, 2020. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
James Kaufman, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You've been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Tuesday, February the 18th, 2020. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. This evening, we have three pages of wastewater claims in the amount of $119,076.94. The floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated March the 2nd, 2020, in the amount of $119,076.94.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business or new business this evening, Board, comments from Board members.
I have none.
I have none.
No comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:02 PM. We will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting as soon as we reset. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, March the 2nd, 2020. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
James Kaufman, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Tuesday, February the 18th, 2020. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, we have 25 pages of corporate claims in the amount of $734,906.50. Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated March the 2nd, 2020, in the amount of $734,906.50.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. Under new business tonight, we have several items. The first item is a request to hold a walk from the Daughters of the American Revolution. This walk will be up Main Street from the library to City Hall on Saturday morning, August the 22nd, 2020. The walk begins at 10:30 AM. And upon arrival at the front steps of the City Hall, the group would then stop to listen to selected speakers and prominent members of the Daughters of the American Revolution from both this local and state level. So they're asking for permission to hold a walk on Main Street on Saturday morning, August 22nd. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
Do police or fire have any objections? Any concerns?
Dave, any thoughts?
No, they're not actually going to walk that far, it doesn't seem.
No. No.
No, I don't have any concern.
No concerns or questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the request from the Daughters of the American Revolution to hold a suffrage walk on Saturday, August 22nd, 2020, at 10:30 AM on Main Street.
I need to ask one more question, I'm sorry. Do we need to have proof of liability insurance?
Yeah, they'll provide it, I'll get with them between now and the event. Motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Next order of business is a permission, the Matt English Foundation, permission to host a Running Tall 5K Walk through the streets of Beach Grove. I pass this out to the police chief and the fire chief for any comment. So they're available for comment. And it looks like the route is up Main Street from Third to Tyson Court. And it loops through Park Grove and comes up through the city park, down Churchman Avenue to Ninth, over to Bell Fountain, Bell Fountain to Third, and then back to Main Street. And this is going to be May the 16th at 10:00 AM. And once again, I'll have them supply, they were working on the liability insurance.
I'll make a motion to approve the Matt English Foundation walk run.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. Next up is permission for the Beach Grove Little League Parade. We are requesting our annual parade take place on Saturday, April the 18th, 2020, departing from the Sarah T. Bolton Park at 9:00 AM with the same route as last year. Amanda Carver, League Information Officer. They have included a copy of their certificate of insurance. So any questions or comments?
I have none.
I have none.
No questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the request for the Little League to hold their annual opening day parade.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. Next up is a memoranning of understanding between the City of Beach Grove and Moore Restoration for Emergency Response in the event of an emergency. This was brought forward after the leak from the restrooms upstairs down into the compliance office. This is a non-binding agreement, and I'll defer to the City Attorney. But this has been requested by our liability carrier to have this coverage in place. And this just puts us at the top of the list in the event that something happens to one of our municipal buildings. So I'll defer to legal counsel.
Yeah, it's just something that we would use if we need it. So it's not something we're paying for and not using it. It's an on-call service. So other than that, it's fine to me.
Dave, any questions or thoughts?
No. No, it looks like it's pretty reasonable from what I see.
No comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the MOU between the City of Beach Grove and Moore Restoration Incorporated.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is step increase for the Fire Department for firefighter Gary Harden. Chief?
Mayor and Board, I come before you today to ask for the approval of pay increase of Gary Harden to the position of second-year firefighter. If approved, Gary's pay will increase to $2,407.13 per pay period. This will take effect, the payroll starting March 21st, 2020. The increase for the position pay is in our 2020 budget.
Comments from Board members?
I have none.
Now, I'll ask for a motion to approve the Chief's request for a pay increase for Gary Harden.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Permission to surplus equipment, Chief?
Mayor and Board, I would request approval for the surplus of the falling equipment that has been removed from service and has no value. One Panasonic CF-18 serial number listed, three Panasonic CF-19 serial number listed, one Panasonic CF-31 with the serial number listed, a Stryker Model 6500 Power Pro cot with the serial number listed, and a Stryker Model 6252 stair chair, the serial number is also listed. And on the back page, I included the letter from Stryker. The cot and the Power Pro stair chair have been removed from service from the accident that happened September 13th, 2019. They deem this equipment as unusable and they would no longer carry their warranty or validate they'll save to use on patients. With that, our insurance purchase, two new replacements for us. We have a new Power Pro cot and a stair chair which is currently in service. And that is why I'm asking to surplus this equipment. The computers are all old, several years old. They've already been replaced. We've had them for backups, but none of them are usable. All the hard drives have been taken out of them. And there's no HIPAA compliant information left on them or anything that we need to be concerned about.
And we've already replaced some of this equipment?
Yes, everything that I'm surpleasing has already been replaced.
Okay, thank you.
Comments from Board members?
I have none.
Now, I'll ask for a motion to approve the surplus of the listed equipment.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Chief, if you could bring that surplus stuff down to City Hall, we could put it with the recycling.
Okay, we're bringing the computers down. Worked out a deal with St. Francis Hospital, once this is surplus. They can use that stair chair and cot for training purposes only. And what we will do is we'll write a letter and also give them the letter from Stryker, let them know that it is not able to be used on a patient or a person. But they have mannequins and they can teach the EMT class how to maneuver a stair chair and a cot. And that will be very beneficial for them. It will also be beneficial for us when they come out to ride at Beach Grove and they'll be utilizing the same equipment that we currently have. And in trade-off, we'll receive some educational benefits from them, free of cost.
Nice, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Next order of business is permission to hire Ian Schwartz part-time in the Parks Department. I'll defer to the clerk to read the request into the record, please.
Dear Beach Grove Board of Works and Public Safety, I'm requesting permission to add Mr. Ian Schwartz to the roster of part-time employees of the Parks Department. Mr. Schwartz will be paid $13.50 per hour and will be limited to 29 hours weekly. Mr. Schwartz has cleared pre-employment, drug screening, and criminal history check. He will begin work with other seasonal laborers in late March and no additional funds are required. Thank you for your consideration of this matter. Thomas Hanan, Director of Beach Grove Parks.
Thanks, Jim. Before we vote on this, I wanted to defer to legal counsel. And I wanted to disclose publicly that Ian Schwartz is the son of Angel Calvert, or Angel McKenna, who serves as our program director at Hornet Park. Before we put this on the agenda, I asked our City Attorney for a legal opinion to see if this person was eligible for employment. So I'll defer to Craig.
Yeah, so in 2012, the Journal Assembly passed nepotism statutes. And you can't, the reason why this is okay is because he's not in the direct line of supervision. So as long as he reports to Tom, it shouldn't be a problem. It's my understanding that the people who are similarly situated to him never report to Angel anyway. So as long as he's reporting to Tom, it shouldn't be a problem.
But I wanted to disclose that publicly, that he is the son of our Hornet Park Program Director. So having said that, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Not on your agenda, we have one more item. A handicap permit came in today. And we wanted to get that out to you.
It is for Mr. Mark Arthur. He was in last week and submitted all his paperwork and information. Just wants to renew that handicap parking spot.
Questions or comments from Board members?
I have none.
Now, I'll ask for a motion to approve the parking, handicap parking permit for Mark Arthur.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. That concludes the new business, comments from Board members.
I have none.
I have none.
No comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:19 PM. And I want the Board to know that we will have a special meeting next Monday, March the 9th, 2020, at 6:00 PM in these chambers to open up bids for the sanitary sewer extension. That will be the only order of business.
Monday?
Yeah, next Monday, 6:00 PM. All right. We'll be adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Common Council meeting for Monday, March the 2nd, 2020. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy Temple, Councilman-at-Large.
Kevin Day, District 4.
Dave Harrison, District 5.
James Kaufman, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Elizabeth Lapping, Council District 1.
Kara Ferguson, Council-at-Large.
Robert Ferguson, District 3.
Gary Hall, District 2.
Thank you, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Under special presentations this evening, we have three items. The first item is a proclamation for Vietnam Veterans Day. And this time, I'll ask the Daughters of the American Revolution to join me at the podium. This is a proclamation naming Friday, March the 29th, 2020, as Vietnam Veterans Day. Whereas legislation was passed in 2008 to declare March the 29th as National Vietnam War Veterans Day, the City of Beach Grove wanted all military members deployed to support one of the longest conflicts in which our country has ever been involved. And whereas we recognize the veterans of our armed forces who served our country in Vietnam as well as the sacrifices they made. And whereas our nation has learned much since its birth, no less lesson as fundamental as the one learned after the Vietnam War, to support and respect our veterans and armed forces members. And whereas we shift our thoughts and prayers to the memories, to the families of over 58,000 who never made it home. And whereas there is a profound sense of humanity in war that can be ignored in the safety of our day-to-day life, may we use this day to recall what was given by the men and women who fought in Vietnam and acknowledge their sacrifices have impacted and will continue to impact lives across America. And whereas we see Vietnam veterans in our daily lives as parents, grandparents, in rural communities, and in the hearts of cities, today, let us seek them out to express our deepest gratitude for what they surrendered for our freedom and that of South Vietnam. Now therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove, do hereby proclaim March the 29th, 2020, as Vietnam Veterans Day in the City of Beach Grove and encourage all citizens to join me in this worthy observance.
Well, I just have one thing. We are hosting or sponsoring a luncheon for the veterans, all veterans, on March the 14th at 2:00 at American Legion here in Beach Grove. It's 327 Main Street. If anybody's a veteran and would like to come, please join us. And it's free. At 2:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next special presentation is swearing-in of a new police officer, Kelsey Gambala. Kelsey is, we have two openings within the Police Department, one due to a resignation and one due to the retirement of Chief Schwartz. So Kelsey is our first one. And the Chief, I think, will bring one forward sometime in April. So having said that, are you ready? Welcome back, come on up. Please raise your right hand and say aye do when I get done talking. I, Kelsey Gambala, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Indiana and that I will faithfully, impartially, and diligently discharge the duties as a police officer for the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, according to law and to the best of my ability.
I do.
Congratulations. Our final presentation is from our high school principal, Liz Walters, Youth Counsel Report. Liz?
Good evening. As you guys probably know, spring is a very heavy testing time for us. So since we were last visiting you, we've given the ASVAB to our students, the ACT. We started the I-Step today. And the SAT will also be on Wednesday of this week. So wish our students luck, it is a heavy testing time. We did host successful parent-teacher conferences and eighth-grade parent meetings, so we thank them for joining us that evening. Jubileers in our choir program is having some fantastic success. Definitely encourage you to take a look at their work. We had champions together at Triton during that basketball game. That was a wonderful evening where we partnered with that group there and had the students play together during the halftime. We just came off of a fantastic spring play, Bed of Thorns, which came together very nicely and had three performances which were very good. In athletics, our girls' basketball program celebrated some success. Neja Lee was named All-Conference ICC and honorable mention, All-County. In wrestling, Harley Taylor advanced to semi-state and fell just one match short of making it to state. We hosted the ICC cheerleading competition this past Saturday and congratulations to the Monrovia Bulldogs. They've placed first three years in a row now, but our girls did very well. Boys' basketball will compete in sectionals this Friday, 6:00 PM at Indian Creek, so we wish them luck. And our winter awards will be on March 18th, which is a Wednesday coming up. I know we mentioned it last time too, but we also held Bill Bain's ceremony to rename the wrestling room after him. So glad that about 150 people were able to join us that evening to celebrate his accomplishments. And I can answer any questions anyone might have. All right, I appreciate it, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, thank you.
Counsel, you have before you a printed copy of the minutes of the February 3rd, 2020 meeting. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections. No questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you, Counsel. Counsel, you have a second set of minutes for a special meeting on Tuesday, February the 18th, 2020. The floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections. No questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Public comments, Counselor.
Nobody signed up?
No one signed up to speak, is there anyone who has decided they would like to speak? If not, we'll move to committee reports. I would like to introduce Shirley Chalice. Shirley is the ABC rep for the City of Beach Grove. And I think this was her second meeting today, is that right? Come on up, Shirley.
Bear with me because I'm totally new at this. We had a meeting this morning at the City-County Building. We had three renewals of the liquor license. That being Payless Liquors, Inc., Walgreens Company on Albany Street, and American Legion 276. All of them were passed on to the state. We had one transfer. That was the Night Owls transferring their liquor license to the new owners. That was also passed on to the state. That was it. Any questions? I have no answers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shirley.
Thanks, Shirley.
Redevelopment Commission Report, Liz?
Yes, thank you very much. Our last meeting was on February the 20th, we all were in attendance. Our balance as of today is $305,045.68. That was after accounts payable of $4,466.96. Our website is making some updates and improvements, thanks to a city volunteer. Trent Newport from Crossroads Engineers will be doing a presentation pertaining to the Greenway at the March 19th meeting, that will be at 7:00 PM. We would encourage all to attend. And Kathy, Mrs. Chapel, has taken the time to put that out in a couple of the newspapers. Mr. Kaufman is working on behalf of the RDC on some past accounts payable corrections due to previous office holder failing to split the invoices. The RDC has agreed to pay about $130,000 for the construction cost of the Franciscan trailer, Greenway. And then also, we split all other outside cost invoices. All members completed their bond forms and we got our bonding forms completed and turned into the Clerk Treasurer. There will be a special meeting on March the 9th here in these chambers at 6:00 PM. And it will be...
and it will be a bid opening that will be dealing with the sewer extension for the milestone construction. So that's an important meeting for everyone to attend, and that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
And No Compliance Division Report. It should be ready by tomorrow. You should have a Greenscape report that was waiting for you tonight. The police report was delivered today, and the fire department report was delivered today as well. The final report is financial. Jim?
Good evening. It's been a busy two months in City Hall. I'll briefly list some things that my office has been working on the last month. I have a new volunteer that has stepped forward to help with the city website. We have been busy updating current information, bank information, and meeting information. There's still a lot of information to update, and we will continue to work on it. I just received a hard copy of the Beech Grove City Ordinance Book. So I just received this one. So we now have an official copy that will be available downstairs in my office during regular business hours if we'd like to look at the actual book. This book cost the City of Beech Grove eighty dollars, and that was for the printing, the binder, and the shipping. The annual report for two thousand and nineteen was submitted on the Gateway last week. This annual report is due each year sixty days after the close of the year. Reports were sent to the local paper, and will be uploaded to the website as well. The OPEB report, which is the Other Post-Employment Benefits Report, was also submitted last week. This report summarizes benefits that may be provided to employees after employment ends. Those benefits are separate from the normal pension, and they include medical insurance, prescription drug, dental, vision, life insurance, long-term, and long-term disability benefits. We are prepared to make our last lease payment this month for the four police cars that were purchased in two thousand and fifteen. This payment of twelve thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars has been made twice a year since the lease began. The bank statements balances are listed below as of today, March second, two thousand twenty. These totals are prior to the claims that were approved earlier this evening. CD Corporation account, two million six hundred thirty-five thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and thirty cents. The utilities, six hundred forty-three thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars and eighty cents. The Criminal Investigation Fund, forty-two thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars and forty cents. RDC, three hundred five thousand, three hundred and five thousand forty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. And then the RDC debt, two hundred and forty thousand. I will continue to have updated information as year continues, goes on. I'm very appreciative of the mayor, city councilors, department heads, city employees, and the citizens of Beech Grove for their patience during this time. Respectfully submitted.
Any questions for the clerk? Thank you, Jim. Move to unfinished business. I'll defer to the President Pro Tem of the Council, or whoever, for an update on Fifth Street parking.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to update the citizens of Beech Grove and the council with the findings regarding the Fifth Avenue parking issue. I personally monitored the intersection for a ten-day period and established a pattern, traffic baseline. During the ten-day period, the slots were available for vehicles seventy-three percent of the time. Moving forward, I contacted the City of Indianapolis's Code Enforcement Office. Code Enforcement Supervisors, Mr. Bravo and Mr. Weber, conducted a very insightful meeting that included our Beech Grove compliance officers, Mr. Bell and Mrs. Chapel. After a very formidable meeting, resources and better procedures were introduced to better serve the community of Beech Grove. I then requested a meeting with our Police Chief Maurice and Deputy Chief Mercury, and also Compliance Officer Ed Bell attended. We openly discussed both departments' responsibilities and duties and how to better manage our current ordinances within the city. I would personally like to thank Mr. Norman Wade for his patience during this issues, or during this issue, but I just wanted to get this right. In closing of the facts, after informing Mr. Wade of the findings and the facts, he has decided to contact the Board of Public Works and request a disability signage for his business at a future date. I'd also like to thank all Main Street businesses and business, I'm sorry, and residents for sharing and their open willingness to simply be good neighbors. I was very positive, and they, quite frankly, just wanted more business on Main Street. I'd also like to extend my thanks to Councilman Timlin and Ferguson and all their valuable input. So after the findings, and after talking to Mr. Wade, which was the business owner of the initial contact, he's going to move forward and request that signage specifically to his business. So I would consider this a closed issue. Thank you.
All right. Questions for the Pro Tem?
Have you reached out to Rosebug? Are they okay with, I know they wanted two-hour parking.
They did. What they done, they've done on their own, and this is something that was done by Mr. Wade. He owns the building on Fifth Avenue, okay? And Susie is a tenant, is from the business side. There's no tenant upstairs as of yet, so I couldn't defer to them, but I've spoke to all the neighbors in the surrounding area. But with that, the owner's father-in-law posted signage up there, okay? Now, when I checked with the City of Indianapolis ordinance, I think they had spoke to Mark, and there was some conversation about that, but those are still there on the building, and it's kind of a gray area. They're really not in violation. So they're still there.
They're really not enforceable either.
What's that? Exactly. And then that's what I confirmed with the police chief, too. So it's a thing, it was just kind of deterred that traffic. So everyone seems to be happy. It kind of worked itself out. And I will note something else. Now, when Mrs. Susie was up there and she showed the photos, she also showed photos of the parking issues. She also showed the trash bin issue. That's been resolved. Indianapolis Board of Work, I'm sorry, Board of Health got involved with a specific business. They rectified all their issues. They made things right. So again, they're trying to be good neighbors. So it's just open communication. It's amazing how that worked out. So if that is any more questions?
I want to thank Gary, and of course, I had a chance to talk to Mr. Ferguson as well. Just want to thank you for how thorough you were, and you touched all the dots, and people need to be connected, and I totally agree with what you said.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes unfinished business. Oh, no, it doesn't. I'm sorry. I wanted to touch base with the sewer rate issue concerning apartments, and I wanted to advise the council that I have begun the process of reaching out to apartments and to large-volume users. And we have also put up a sign on the counter at City Hall, and I'll defer to the clerk about that one, to let the people know about the rate increases who come in to pay their sewer bill. But before I defer to Jim on that, you should in your packet have this sheet. And these are apartment complexes, and then the first column is the number of units in each apartment. The current charges are their last bill that they received, their last monthly bill. And this would be, the next column is the three dollar and ninety-nine cent increase. And then the final column would be if we charge them at a flat rate per each apartment. So it just gives you a comparison of where we're at. And I want to report to you, and we'll be doing about, I'll be doing about six of these this week, and I was a little surprised at the response I got. First of all, I think, and you need to be aware, if you look at the third one down, Parkview, they are a very, very high water user. But if they go to flat rate, their rate is, their rate, their monthly rate is actually going to go down. Do you follow me on that? They're the only apartment that is affected like that. The rest of them have an increase. I spoke with them today. I spoke with another apartment complex, and what they do with their utilities is, other than internet and telephone and TV, the natural gas, the water, the electricity, and sewer, they average it out to every apartment. So what they've told me is they already pay a flat rate for all of their utilities, and that's just their way, it's not like we designed, but that's their way of equaling it out through the whole complex. And I was a little taken back by that. I wasn't expecting that. So I meet tomorrow with a high-end user, and I'll meet the rest of the week with some apartments, and I'll keep going. But I just wanted to let, report back to you on where we're at with talking with some of these ratepayers. I am concerned, if you look at the very first one, and I'm going to sit down with him and talk to him, I'm very concerned about the pool of wind apartment complex. But I'm going to sit down and talk to him. But in all fairness, counsel, they have almost six hundred units, so it's obviously going to be higher. And, but anyway, I'm going to sit down and talk to him, but I wanted to report back to you tonight, this is where we're at, and I'm open to, I'll always be open to any suggestion we may have. And I want to also, before I turn over to Counselor Ferguson, I want to talk to, have Jim just the comments that he's receiving in the clerk's office due to the rate increase and people that are finding out about the rate increase.
So it was put on this month's bill, so the bills were just mailed out last week. I think most people received them on Saturday, if not today. So there was a notice on there to go to the website, so it's on the website there, information on the increases, what they will be. And then we have signage downstairs. So most people, they come in, they're not surprised if it's going up. We are telling them that, you know, Citizens has raised their rates, the trash fee, the trash cost of disposing of the waste, trash is increasing as well. So most people understand why it's happening. Nobody likes it, but I think they understand that it's something that has to happen. So we're giving them the new totals, what to expect on their bill for next month. I'm going to call to Invoice Cloud. They do all of our email bills out to people who pay online, about sending out a letter, hopefully this week, to people who receive their bills online with the note just from the city stating, here's what you're paying now, next month you will see an increase in that, because if they don't, if you don't do that, I don't think they would know, other than they come to the meetings or go to their website. But I think most people understand that it has to happen. Again, they don't like it, but they see why it's happening, and we're there for any questions they have. And I think it was advertised in the paper as well, so people should, there are ways to find out if they're open to learning that information.
But over the next month, we want to get, we want to talk to as many businesses and people as we possibly can to get them acclimated with it, because this will come sometime in either April or May, depending on when Keystone gets it set up in the system.
We sent the ordinance to Keystone, they're our financial software, so they're the ones who does all the billing. So we've sent all the ordinance to them, all the increases, the numbers and all that stuff, so they're working on getting that implemented in their system for the next billing. So I'm assuming it'll be next month, but that was sent to them last week. So it usually takes anywhere from four to six weeks to get that implemented, sometimes quicker, depending on how many other municipalities are doing the same thing at the same time. So, but I look to see it here in the next month or so, probably the next billing, hopefully.
Thanks, Jim. And at the last meeting, Counselor Ferguson talked about doing some research on ways we can help those who are on fixed income and those who are retired. He's still working on it, and I wanted to defer to him so that he could comment on where he's at, and you should have all received some information from him before the meeting started. Counselor?
Yeah, so the last two weeks have been pretty busy for me. In the last two weeks, I've reached out and talked to the City of Greenwood, the City of Cumberland, the City of Lawrence, and the town of Speedway. So I've reached out to all those cities to inquire if they offer any type of assistance programs to their residents. And also, I know that the rate increases are also affecting those cities also, because beside, I think the City of Speedway still has their own treatment facility, but the other cities all have Citizen Energy treating their wastewater also. So what I found out is that none of the cities offer any type of program for assistance. I did also did some research with IPL and Citizens. They both offer, or they refer the Citizens to Indy Two-One-One, that they can go online, and they can apply for assistance to assist them with their bills. And they also, both companies offer grants. A portion of their profits, they put into a grant that Citizens can apply for, and they also offer to where us as Citizens can pay extra money to help cover the cost of somebody's bill. So that's some stuff I found out. Some other interesting things I found out while I was doing my research is the City of Greenwood and the City of Speedway, or the town of Speedway, are both actively trying to reduce the amount of clean water that's getting into the sewer system that's overflowing it during heavy rain. Both of them have city ordinances on the books to address the issue with subpumps. Both of them take a drastic different approach on their enforcement and how they handle it. So I think that's something that we definitely need to look more into, and I'm going to continue my research. I'm going to start reaching out to possible other cities and other states to see if they have some type of program available out there. So this is just an update, still something I'm going to continue working on, that's just what I found out over the last two weeks.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions, comments on that topic?
I, just real quick, just to clarify. So on the bill, so we passed the ordinance, so there's not going to be a catch-up. It's just going to, they're not going to get charged for like the extra amount for two months. It'll just go right into the new rate, correct? Yeah, so I just want to be sure.
Thank you, counsel. We turn over to new business. I put a resolution together for distracted driving. This has already passed the Senate by a vote of forty-eight to one. The person who voted against it, voted against it because he did not think the penalty was high enough. The penalty's five hundred dollars. He thinks it should be at least a thousand. But I asked counsel tonight to support this resolution so we could send it to the House Legislature, so that the House of Representatives can pass this resolution as well. And I'll ask the clerk to read it into the record, please.
Resolution number four, two thousand twenty. Resolution number four, two thousand twenty, is a resolution in support of Indiana House Bill Ten Seventy, in which the Indiana State Government strives to reduce distracted driving in the state. Whereas Indiana House Bill Ten Seventy provides that a person may not hold or use a telecommunications device in the driver's seat of a motor vehicle while the motor vehicle is in motion unless the device is used in conjunction with hands-free or voice-operated technology, or used to call nine-one-one to report a bona fide emergency. Removes prohibitions on typing, transmitting, or reading a text message or an electronic mail message while operating a moving motor vehicle. And whereas the Common Council recognizes that distracted drivers increase crashes on roadways in the region, and whereas the emphasize safety on our nation's roads by requiring that states and regions adopt and pursue the achievement of targets for reducing traffic-related deaths and serious injuries. And whereas the Common Council of the City of Beech Grove is a legislative body authorized to approve resolutions and ordinances concerning the City of Beech Grove. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Common Council for the City of Beech Grove hereby supports the approval of Indiana House Bill Ten Seventy.
Thank you, Jim. Questions or comments from council members? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote, and we will send those to Representative Kirkoffer and Senator Freeman for their record. Thank you. Next order of new business is Uniform Conflict of Interest Disclosure Statement for Lynn Rackaway. And at this time, I'll defer to the clerk. Jim?
It requires that if somebody has a conflict of interest, they must disclose that conflict. Lynn is a firefighter here for the city of Beech Grove. He also does a lot of the IT work here for the city. So, what would be email, setting up email accounts, working on IT systems here at City Hall, Fire Department, Police Department, that area. So, he's just disclosing that. He is an employee, but also when he's not being paid by the city, he might do some work for us and we invoice, or he invoices accordingly. So, have a signed disclosure form for him. So he's, he does that every year. He's been doing that for several years, as far as I know, helping with the IT here for the city, so.
Gary, did you ever get your email squared?
I don't think so. I got a call the day from a resident, and they said they sent me something yesterday and I didn't get it. But we had a lengthy discussion, so.
With Lynn?
Uh, no, with the, with the resident.
Is it still like that? Okay, I, I'm hoping not. Might check it again, but I know we were working on a lot of that when that issue was brought up a month ago.
Thanks.
Yeah, but emailing it to gary.hall@beechgrove should work. Okay, that works.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, I'll fix that link though, if it's still there, check it out.
A conflict of interest form, disclosure form for Lynn Rackaway, we'll need to approve that, so a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion to approve Conflict of Interest Form for Lynn Rackaway.
I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Oh, I'm sorry, I can't vote. I'm sorry. I'm thinking the border works. Nope, sorry. And we'll sign that and send that off. Last order of new business, counsel, this evening is a discussion on adjusting ambulance rates. No vote tonight. I just want the fire chief to do a presentation. We began our ambulance service back in nineteen seventy-three, and from seventy-three to seven, to eighty-seven, if I'm not mistaken, we didn't charge for ambulance service. When we began providing advanced life support skills, I think that was the time when we started charging for services. This service was never meant to be, it, how I wanna say this, it was never, it's never been about your ability to pay. It's always been about your need. And we write off millions of dollars each year. People, some people just can't pay, and that's, I, I understand that. But people have needs. Federal government reimburses us for fees, along with private insurers. But the rules are starting to change a little bit, and, and I think it would be good if, if you folks heard from the chief about why we need to adjust our rates. And if you decide you wanna do that, then we'll put it in ordinance form for April. So, I'm gonna turn it over to the chief, and you should have a letter in your packet from the fire chief concerning this matter. So, chief?
Good evening, counsel. I hope everyone had the opportunity to read the letter I handed out to concern our ambulance rates at Beech Grove. And the mayor is correct, it's, it's our philosophy to serve the citizens of Beech Grove, and definitely don't overcharge for those services that we provide. Over the last few years, we've seen a dramatic spike of costs to provide this care. Most notably is medications and equipment. Currently, we purchase our EMS equipment through three vendors. One, our medications and oxygen supplies come through IEMS. We were able to partner with them, so we can purchase these supplies through IEMS at a decreased rate. The first couple of years that we did this, we saw significant savings from what we were spending. Our volume of runs have gone up, so our cost of equipment, medications, has gone up also. We also purchase equipment through emergency medical products, and those are usable items such as gloves. They're one-time-use, disposable. We go through a lot of gloves, ET tubes, disposable items. Medications are also bought through Franciscan Health, St. Francis on the south side. And that's where we purchase our narcotics, and, for example, our cyanide kit. If someone was in a fire, had smoke inhalation, and we would have to start a cyanide kit on them. One of those kits alone is a thousand dollars. So you're talking a lot of money for just medications alone. The price of Narcan has gone up dramatically over the last three years. Glucagon, if you're a diabetic, and you know what Glucagon is, to help increase your blood sugar. If we can't start IV, IV and we have to give Glucagon, a single dose of Glucagon is a hundred and eighty dollars. So those costs have gone up. And I didn't go into the cost in this report, because if you have any questions, please feel free to call, email, stop by the station. And we can show you our ambulances and what we mean. We're talking about some of these tangible items on, on the vehicles and the equipment. Fifty-five percent of our income comes from Medicare and Medicaid. And those rates are based on a customary rate for our geographical region, which is here in Marion County. A couple things that was disturbing, that I felt we need to address as a city, is we're the only municipality in Marion County that has a, two separate rates. We have an in-city rate and an outside-city rate. And this can present a problem, and Counselor Harrison probably talked on the insurance side for us. We're charging a lesser rate for citizens here in Beech Grove, but a higher rate right across the street. There's been a lot of pushback from insurance companies saying, well, you're price gouging, because it doesn't directly, it doesn't cost us more to operate that ambulance when that runs closer than it is farther away in the city. So we need to adjust that. And what I'm asking, go across-the-board rate for all ambulance runs that we've responded to. I'm also asking to have those rates in line with IEMS rates across the board. We are currently surrounded by IEMS. If a Beech Grove ambulance is out of, taking care of somebody in our city, and they're transporting, and we don't have an ambulance available, and IEMS comes in the city, our citizens will be charged an IEMS rate. When we go outside of the city and transport, we need to charge an IEMS rate, the same rate that those citizens would be charged also, not a reduced rate that we currently have. And that's very important also. Forty-five percent of our other income comes from commercial insurance, workman's comp, and auto insurance reimbursement from auto vehicle accidents. And that accounts for the remainder portion of what we receive for income on the ambulance side. In twenty nineteen, we brought in one million, two-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-one dollars in ambulance revenue. We wrote off over three million dollars in revenue. We work with MedBill, they, they all of our billing, and they work with the hospitals, they work with people who don't have insurance. A lot of times, we end up writing these bills off because we're not out to put someone in bankruptcy. Bills are expensive. We, we know that, we understand that, and we try to take care of our citizens. But the response party, we've always given decreased rates and assistance for anyone who's receiving government benefits. That includes Hoover Healthwise, VA benefits, Medicare, Medicaid, if they're on food stamps or have other disability assistance. We always work with them foremost, and make sure we do not cause any burden on our citizens that need this help. We also ask our citizens, when they're transported to the hospital, to apply at the hospital. The hospital has the best resources to help our citizens. One, not only with ambulance bill, but for their in-hospital care and extended care. And if the patients let the receiving facility know they need assistance, that's even quicker to get them in the process to help get them through their time of need. So I tried to explain some of that in this report, also try to break down what the difference between a BLS and ALS run, and an ALS II run was for you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those for you at this time.
So just to clarify, so someone from Beech Grove might call for an ambulance need and, and an outside service. So there, there's no guarantee that when they call an ambulance, they're gonna get a Beech Grove service, they're gonna get a Beech, so, so, I just, just to clarify.
Correct. Our, our crews do a very good job. We were put in a diff, different situation here a few years back, and we talked about when St. Francis Hospital closed. We had the luxury of a hospital sitting on our back door. Now we are transporting to other hospitals, Franciscan Health on the south side, and Community South, Community East. And we all know what the traffic is like nowadays in these areas, has also increased and grown dramatically. So it does take crews, you know, slightly longer to get to their transport and destination spot. We face other issues, our crews arrive to the hospital. If you've been to a hospital ER lately, they stay busy. They are extremely busy, and our, it takes time for our crews to get through triage, to give a report about the patient, to fill out paperwork, and get back here in the city. Our crews are very diligent, and they mark in service, when they, they listen to the radio, but by the time they hit Southport Road, they're marking a service, or if they're coming from the north side, by the time they hit Raymond Street, they're marking back in service to take care of our citizens here in Beech Grove, make sure those trucks are available for them.
Chief, as a, as a witness to that, as you know, working at St. Francis, that it, it is time-consuming when you think about, when we were here in Beech Grove, we were in the city, and then, it, it doesn't seem like it's that far away with traffic, but you're right, once you're marked out there, they've got an obligation to pass on the information, and so on. So that, it, it does take more time out of service, and nothing that can be helped, so.
It is, is, and things have changed. And I talked about taking care of our citizens, and they might have insurance, and their doctors at Community North, they're at the heart hospital. We have to take care of our patients, and we transform where they need to go, what is most appropriate for them. And that is where their hospital is, where their physician is, their cardiologist, and where they're in network with their insurance plan. It would be a disservice to you if we said, oh, no, let's, let's take you someplace closer, 'cause that's just too far away. We have to provide that service to you, and that's part of it. It's taking care of you, the patient, and getting you where you need to be at that time. And our crews will do that for you. So that's, that's another good question you brought up. Any other questions at this time?
When would you like this to become effective?
Yeah, I would like to give you guys the opportunity to discuss it. If you have any questions, I can state, my office is always open. You can call me, email, or stop by if you have any questions about the equipment, or what services we do provide, and what the different levels of service mean. Please come by, and we'll show you, we're, we're talking about those. But as soon as you guys are ready to make a decision, that's up to, up to you.
I wanna ask you, Narcan, that's not gonna go down. It, it just seems like it's continuing to be a big thing. And a lifesaver to boot, but.
It is a lifesaver. It continues, it, it will go up in cost. And Chief Pierce, he still has the opportunity, he runs on medic truck, he works part-time for St. Francis, helps us out. But he was telling me the other day about a gentleman that had the overdose, and took multiple doses of Narcan, just to get this guy's respiratory drive to kick in, where he can breathe on his own. And we see that more and more, where it takes more Narcan just to.
And it could be probably a scary thing on the medic, too, that you don't know how a person's gonna re, recover from that Narcan, whether they're gonna be violent, 'cause they're just not aware of their surroundings, 'cause, just don't want to throw that in there.
And they do fight. They will. If you don't have any further questions, I just wanna thank you for your time, and thank you for reading that report. And like I said, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact me.
Thank you, J.J.
Thanks, chief. Counsel, we're looking for some advice on, and guidance on, would you like to see this in ordinance form, and would you like to adjust the rates for what we charge for ambulance service? I'm open to any recommendation you may have. Or you can simply say, I'm not interested at this time to do this.
Well, I speak, I'm, I think it's important that this be visited. And I also think that Indianapolis emergency rates are gonna, and they come into the community, which can sometimes not be helped, just as Beech Grove has to go in to their community, which gives them the savings. I don't quite understand why our rates have to be different, providing the same services. But at least somewhere in, in that area is a good guideline. But I, I do think it needs to be visited somewhat. I don't have all the numbers or anything, of course, but just taking from what the chief said, absolutely.
Kevin?
I agree with Buddy. Yeah, I'd like to see it, see it in an ordinance at the next meeting.
Dave?
Yeah, I'd agree with it.
I absolutely think that, I think, you know, in the environment that our, our first responders are in now, and the demands for the diversity of different areas and, and everything, so cost of medicines, absolutely, I think this is certainly something to get on, on ordinance.
Kara?
Yeah, I absolutely agree with it. I think I'd like to learn a little bit more about it as well.
Bobby?
It's a valid point. I mean, I know firsthand that with the working agreement that Beech Grove has with the city of Indianapolis, it goes for both police and fire services. So both cities will help out each other's cities. And if IEMS is charging one fee, then it, by theory, it should be the same fee across the board as being charged in Marion County.
Gary?
Yeah, move it forward and have it consistent across the board, please.
What we'll do, counsel, is I'll have the chief put an ordinance together and present it to you at the April meeting. All right, thank you very much. That concludes new business. Counsel comments. Buddy?
I wanna thank the Fire Department the other day for inviting us over to one of their houses. It was more of a, a chance to be a little more personal, but at the same time, be able to take a look around and, and talk to the firefighters. There's a person in the audience, he's gonna hate me for doing this, but our Parks Department, first of all, you start out with Tom Hannah. I don't know if Tom Hannah, if you add his hours together, I think he makes like five bucks an hour or something. But there's not a better capable, I mean, as far as a citizen, and as far as employee of the city, John Morgan, and as, and as a friend, you couldn't ask for any better. And it's just looking out there how fortunate an example that we have in, in the people who work for the city. I've always said that probably the best thing about living in Beech Grove really is our services, the people that we have that take care of our needs, our police and fire. You know, our police department, and like, like many others, they go out and do the, the, the simple things, or the things you're thinking, well, my gosh, here they are for this. At the same time, they gotta go out and do all the serious things, because they represent us. So, just wanted to thank the department heads and so forth for having good leadership, I guess, and good personnel. So, thank you.
I just wanna thank everybody for coming. Thank you to the Fire Department for having us out for breakfast. And everybody, have a good evening.
Oh yeah, thank everyone for coming and enjoyed the Fire Department, probably the best breakfast I've ever had. People that I've never had this, these guys can cook.
I was trying to make it sound more serious, that gathering, but it was breakfast, yeah.
But, um, thank everyone for coming and, and that. And I, I did wanna ask the chief one question, the fire chief. Have you ever heard of a city that ref-? Have you ever heard of a city that refuses fire, uh, Narcan? I've seen this on the news. They've actually passed legislation and I don't know whether it's the first time they go out or the third time. But I, I think it's after three times, they refuse them Narcan.
Yeah, I read that in a city in Ohio.
Is that where it was? I couldn't, I caught the last of it. Yeah, I, it, it just seemed kind of, you know, I thought, but their point was, hey, we've been out here three times, saved this guy, the same guy and blah, 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 and we'll let the hospital do it if he makes it. I'm like, damn, that's kind of cruel. But they did pass it. But the last thing I'd say is, uh, basketball team ended on a bad note. They really sucked the last game. Um, they really did. They were without their best player too, who got suspended for three games. But, uh, other than that, they play this Friday at Indian Creek. What are, there's no good way to get to Indian Creek. Anybody got a helicopter down one there? But that's where it's at Friday, Indian Creek at six o'clock. That's it.
Well, I guess thank you again for the breakfast from the fire department. It was wonderful time to get to know some of our, we had breakfast with some of our champions on, on Saturday. And we'll, we'll look forward to the police department to have a breakfast. But I wanted to thank them. I wasn't expecting to get this back. I did the Fire Ops one oh one last September and I dropped this off and all the guys and gals, they all signed my, my helmet for me. So this is a treasured piece because I was able to complete that Fire Ops one oh one. So I ta, I challenge anyone to, to take that challenge. Next year, will, will there be another one next year, I suppose? Two years. Oh, I'm, but anyway, thanks, everybody. The breakfast was wonderful.
Kara?
Also, thanks to the fire department for the awesome breakfast and they know I will be scheduling the slumber party with the police department and the fire department. We're all going to get together and have a good time, get to know each other, you know, trying to mix it up a little. Um, so thanks to you guys for, uh, for, oh, I should tell my husband, right?
Could you?
I'm not allowed to hang out with the fire.
We, we want to be able to repeat that again. We weren't, we were.
Anyway, but thank you so much for that. Um, and, uh, I just want to say that, um, I've seen a lot just in the last, just, I don't know, even thirty days or so of a lot of our citizens just really being kind to one another and helping each other out. Um, and even our council working together, um, and not, not always, you know, having to remember what side we're on, right? Or what it is. It's about the, the community and about the citizens. So, um, I just want to say thanks to everybody for continuing to work together to make Beech Grove beautiful.
Yep. Uh, I want to thank everybody for coming out. Uh, I will not be participating in the, in the slumber parties.
You get to have one with me all the time, right?
Yeah. Uh, I want to thank the fire department. That was a very kind gesture to have us out there, uh, for us to see their facilities, see how they live for their twenty-four hour shift and some of the struggles that they have to deal with in the older facilities. Um, also, uh, police chief, uh, please pass my congratulations on to Officer Gimbala. Is that correct? Okay, please pass that one to her. Tell her thank you for joining the, uh, brotherhood and sisterhood that we all share. Um, definitely if she has any concerns or something like that, please let us know. We will see what we can do to address those. Uh, and then I will, I'll continue to, uh, do my research when it comes to the, uh, uh, help that we can provide our citizens with the sewer rates. Thank you.
Uh, thank everyone for their time and also congratulations to an officer, uh, police officer. Thank you.
Um, I wanted to give the council and the public a little bit of information. Uh, a friend of us all, Dan Norris, uh, took on some additional responsibilities with Indianapolis Marion County Forensic Services and has decided to step away from the Parks Board. Uh, he's contacted, uh, Amanda Rubidoo and Rick Skirvin, uh, but, uh, we'll reach out to the remainder of the board. Uh, his position is a mayor appointment and I've asked Tara Wolf to stand up and, and take his position and she's accepted. So, uh, we're going to swear her in this week, but I wanted you to know that, uh, before we adjourn tonight. So, um, ha, having said that, uh, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned. I'm not sure what time. Thank you.